And Mayor Clumstein.
Here. We will start with our Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Our invocation will be led by our city Assistant City Manager Matt West. And if I could have Councilwoman Yasanya Munat lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
All right, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we come together this evening, may we be united in our commitment to serve. Let us honor all who contribute to the fabric of our city. Individuals, families, businesses, and organizations, each adding their unique voice to our shared community. And may we remain mindful of our duty to foster a city that uplifts, includes, and empowers every person who calls it home. We ask this in your name, amen.
Please turn, remove your caps. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to move a little out of order. I'm going to pull items six and seven from the consent calendar. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
A voting. Have a...
I have nothing on my screen.
Okay, we can do a roll call.
Roll call, that'd be great, thank you.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
Councilmember Munatun?
Yes.
Councilmember Destegi?
Yes.
And Mayor Clumstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, so that will take us to seven, which is adoption of a proclamation recognizing Red Ribbon Week from October 23rd to October 31st. And our Assistant City Manager Shawn Park will read the Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Thank you.
Would the Elks Representative Therese Kayazo, DAP Chairperson, please come forward? Whereas alcohol and drug abuse affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified efforts by community members be launched to prevent drug abuse, and whereas National Red Ribbon Week offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, whereas National Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated in communities across the nation on October 23rd through 31st of 2025, and whereas the theme for 2025 is "Life is a Puzzle, Solve It Drug-Free", and underscores the Elks' ongoing dedication to fostering healthy, drug-free lifestyles among youth. And whereas the Garden Grove Elks has initiated DAP, a drug awareness program, to promote drug abuse awareness and encourage schools, businesses, government, law enforcement, media, healthcare providers, religious institutions, and other community-based organizations to demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing red ribbons and participating in drug prevention activities. Now therefore, the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st of 2025 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages the community to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during National Red Ribbon Week, but also throughout the year, making a visible statement that Garden Grove is strongly committed to a drug-free lifestyle.
Thank you, thank you. I'm squawking through.
If I may, Mayor Clumstein?
Stein.
And City Councilmembers, introduce Elroy, our mascot for Drug Awareness Program. He encourages, and kids love him, and encourages to live a drug-free lifestyle. So he's representing our Drug Awareness Program. And then, a lot of people don't really know what Red Ribbon Week is and where it originated. So if I may have two minutes of your time to read? The origin of National Red Ribbon Week is October 23rd through October 31st. Enrique Kiki Camarino was born in Mexicali Baja, California, July 26, 1947. In 1956, he and his family moved to nearby Colexico, California. In 1970, Camarino joined the Colexico PD, where he was later assigned to El Centro, where he worked as a narcotics investigator for Imperial County. In 1974, Enrique became a special agent with the DEA. Camarino wanted to make an impact on his country, but his family was very worried. Even his mother had tried to talk him out of becoming a special agent, but Kiki refused, saying, "Even if I'm only one person, I can make a difference." During the early 1980s, Enrique was assigned to Mexico, where he was on the trail of Mexican marijuana and cocaine drug traffickers. In 1985, during Enrique's time in Mexico, Enrique came dangerously close to exposing top leaders of a multi-billion-dollar drug pipeline in this country. And eighty-five billion dollars is a lot even, I mean, just what it is even today. But nonetheless, because of this, he was scheduled to be moved to another assignment in 1985. However, in 1985, on February 7th at 2:00 PM, in broad daylight, Kiki was kidnapped by five men as he left the American consulate in Guadalajara, Mexico, and route to have lunch with his wife. The kidnappers drove him to a residence in the western section of Guadalajara, where Kiki was interrogated and tortured for more than thirty hours, before the kidnappers brutally killed Enrique Kiki Camarino. Later that same day, a Mexican pilot named Alfredo Zavala Avila, who flew missions with Camarino and was a DEA asset, was also abducted. Sadly, this would be the last time anyone but his kidnappers would see both of them alive. Special Agent Enrique Camarino, along with his pilot Alfredo, were found wrapped in plastic outside a rural area, outside of the small town of Lanangustro, a month later, on March 5th, 1985. However sad and tragic that is, something good did come out of it. Enrique Camarino's legacy lives on. He left behind his wife Geneva Mika Camarino and their three sons. Camarino sacrificed his life in the fight against drugs, and members of his community wanted to do something to remember and honor Kiki, and thus by wearing a satin red ribbon. This is where Red Ribbon Week was born. Red Ribbon Week started in Camarino's hometown of Colexico, but soon gained momentum across California. The Elks organization through the Drug Awareness Program is the largest volunteer drug awareness program in the United States, continually striving to work within our community of Garden Grove to promote drug awareness. We are immensely proud of our dedicated army of volunteers who freely give their time and talents to this most noble cause. The Elks are committed to eliminating the use and abuse of illegal drugs by all members of society, and believe that to ensure a bright future for our community and our country is essential to our children to be educated and represent what we can be, a drug-free environment. Today, the eight-day celebration in its annual catalyst to show intolerance for drugs in our schools, workplaces, and communities. Each year, more than eighty million people, young people, adults, show their commitment to a healthy, drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying this red ribbon. Garden Grove Elks Lodge respectfully thanks Mayor Stephanie Clumstein and the Garden Grove City Council for presenting and officially proclaiming the City of Garden Grove recognized for National Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st, 2025. Thank you. All right, we get emotional?
I have a proclamation for you.
Okay. Elroy? Elroy? Are you guys? Oh, is it the, not the red ribbon?
Alcohol today.
That's all right. We're gonna, we're gonna, okay, we're gonna do a little. For right now, that I have your proclamation, I'll have you in a photo with it. And then we'll get the real ones, like, I'm standing up. Ready? Do you want us to take the thing? Thank you so much, thank you. Okay, you guys, and obviously, well, thank you.
All right, we have another community spotlight this evening. We have several of them. And this one is a community spotlight in recognition of the 25th anniversary of the Magnolia Park Family Resource Center. And we just voted on a proclamation recognizing the Magnolia Park Family Resource Center on its 25th anniversary. And Assistant to our City Manager Shawn Park has the staff report on that.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize and celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Magnolia Park Family Resource Center. Would Claudia Valdivia Alvarez, Senior Program Specialist, Vicky Casillas, Eligibility Technician, and the volunteers members of the Community Engagement Action Council, please come forward? The Magnolia Park FRC was established in 2000 through a unique partnership between the City of Garden Grove, the County of Orange Social Services Agency, and the Families and Communities Together, ORFAC. Since then, Magnolia Park FRC, located in Garden Grove's District 2, has been a trusted community hub for 25 years by supporting families, empowering youth, and building a more connected community. What once started as a proactive neighborhood collaborative has grown into the Magnolia Park FRC, which now serves tens of thousands of residents and offers invaluable resources in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese, reflecting the diversity and compassion that shaped Garden Grove. Over the past 25 years, the Magnolia Park FRC has also provided essential services, such as counseling, crisis intervention, health and wellness services, parenting education, and youth leadership programs, and more. Magnolia Park FRC's lasting impact would not be possible without the dedication of its staff, volunteers, and community partners, who work together to ensure that every family has the opportunity to thrive. Through collaboration, compassion, and commitment, the Magnolia Park FRC continues to fulfill its mission of building healthy communities, one family at a time. At this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to present the Magnolia Park FRC team with a proclamation honoring the milestone 25th anniversary of the Magnolia Park Family Resource Center, as they celebrate a quarter century of dedicated service to the Garden Grove community.
We're very fortunate to have quite a few community spotlights this evening. We have another one, a community spotlight in recognition of Thomas House Family Shelter, which has provided a safe, supportive environment for families experiencing homelessness and at-risk families for over forty years. And Assistant to our City Manager Shawn Park will read that community spotlight.
Thank you, Mayor. The Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize and celebrate forty years of Thomas House Family Shelter and its service to families across Orange County. Would Shaquoya Green Long, CEO of Thomas House, please come forward? Since its founding in 1986, Thomas House Family Shelter has provided far more than a place to stay for families with children experiencing homelessness. It's become a place to heal, to grow, and to start over. Located in Garden Grove's District 6, Thomas House Family Shelter is a trusted organization that continues to transform lives every day and serves as a beacon of hope for many. Through its two key programs, Transitional Shelter and Homeless Prevention, Thomas House Family Shelter delivers tailored services that help families overcome barriers, achieve long-term housing, and gain the confidence to be independent. From housing assistance and life skills training to education and supportive counseling, every program is designed to build a foundation of resilience and self-sufficiency. Over the years, Thomas House Family Shelter has expanded its reach and services to meet the growing needs of families in crisis. The organization also introduced career development, youth mentoring, and enrichment programs to help parents achieve financial independence and encourage children to break the cycle of poverty. For over four decades, Thomas House Family Shelter's mission has remained dedicated to guiding families toward a brighter, more secure future, while strengthening the community through partnership, care, and opportunity. At this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to present Shaquoya Green Long with the Crystal Award honoring forty years of Thomas House Family Shelter's outstanding service and life-changing impact in Garden Grove and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clumstein, and to the City Council members for your continuous support of Garden Grove. Thomas House, that has been at Garden Grove for forty years, truly started out of humble beginnings, as you all know. And we're just truly grateful to continue to be able to support the unfortunate growing need of unhoused families to become independent and self-sufficient. It's truly our goal and our mission to see every family housed. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that takes us on to another presentation. A community spotlight in recognition of the 2025 Foods of Garden Grove Live participating eateries. And Assistant to our City Manager Shawn Park has that community spotlight as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Last, but certainly not least, the Garden Grove City Council takes great pleasure in recognizing the participating eateries of the 2025 Foods of Garden Grove Live event for making this year's edition a huge success. Foods of Garden Grove Live, the city's popular tasting event, returned to downtown Garden Grove this past September and brought together residents, visitors, and dozens of local eateries for an evening of international flavors, live music, and family fun at Billard Green Park and the Garden Amp. This year, the event showcased Garden Grove's rich culinary diversity and community spirit with glowing attractions in the Glow Zone, interactive art in the Dark Installations, and a concert headlined by No Duh at the Garden Amp. Foods of Garden Grove Live is a part of the city's Foods of Garden Grove Initiative, which highlights more than 150 select international food and drink establishments. The initiative supports small businesses and offers a virtual food tour of Garden Grove's vibrant dining scene, including Little Saigon, OC Curriertown, Latin Eateries, and Michelin Guide honorees. At this time, the Mayor and City Council would like to recognize the following participating eateries and partners for their support of this year's event. Would the representatives from each of the participating eateries who are in attendance, please come forward to receive your certificate, take your photo, and remain up front for a group photo at the end. Those joining us this evening include Azteca Restaurant and Lounge, Smoke Queen Barbecue, Fuq Long Coffee and Tea, Sabroso Mexican Grill, Mornings Coffee Garden Grove, Shawarma House, Amherst Farmhouse, Tommy's Fast and Fresh Burger, Kadju Soft Tofu Restaurant, The Smoking Ribs, Jerusalem Roastery, and Nova Kitchen and Bar. While everyone comes up. I believe we also have in attendance Los Sanchez Restaurant. While everyone is coming up to the front, we have quite a big group. We would also like to acknowledge the eateries who could not join us this evening. Those include Apollo Burger, Barrio, Carolina's Italian Restaurant, Brothers Products, Chubby Tea Shop, Henry's Bar and Grill, Pha Red Bo, Bo No Nabe, Lovefish, Los Cotijas, and Claus and Cream. All right. On behalf of the city, thank you all for making Foods of Garden Grove Live a memorable evening, bringing our community together, and showcasing the diverse flavors of our city.
No, you're more than welcome to go. Now the boring stuff starts, so you're more... The real work, yeah. Thank you all so much. It's amazing to see so many of our local restaurants here, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Well, that was fun, and now we head into oral communication. I have one pink card this evening. Kyle Mason.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Kyle Mason, you guys have seen me before. I want to thank you for at least putting in a couple more police officers in our area. It's been a little bit more safer and a little bit more quieter. But, we still have a lot of going on. I just showed George some pictures of a lady wearing pink, handing supplies down into the riverbed again. There's a lot down there, you guys got to clean it up. I'd like to know if they're going to put the fence in and going across, and when is it going to be done? I mean, it's been a month and a half now or so, and we haven't heard a word. But again, I appreciate very much you guys having the extra police officers, who have been doing good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have two items under written communication this evening, item number four.
Item number four is a consideration of a request from King Shocks Technology, Inc. for temporary street closures to host the Third Annual Christmas Toy Drive on Saturday, December 20th, 2025. And Deputy Community Services Director Janet Pley is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. For the past few years, King Shocks Technology Incorporated has held a Christmas Toy Drive that has been a huge success. The events united the off-road, overland, and outdoor community together, with over 1,000 off-road builds on hand, 5,000 people in attendance, and more than 100 vendors. The events have collected many toys that are distributed to organizations in the community, including the Orange County Fire Authority and the Magnolia Park Family Resource Center. Additionally, King Shocks Technology has fulfilled all event permit requirements that included partnerships with a local nonprofit organization in good standing, insurance coverage, street closure approvals from the City Council, and reimbursement for all direct costs to provide city support. King Shocks Technology is requesting City Council approval for temporary closure of city streets for the Third Annual Christmas Toy Drive on Saturday, December 20th. The event route has been reviewed by the Garden Grove Police Department Traffic Division, who has agreed to provide staff support for the closure of city streets during the event. The route would require street closures on Lamson Avenue between Knot Street and Monarch Street, on Edison Way between Lamson Avenue and Belgrave Avenue, on Industry Street between Lamson Avenue and Chapman Avenue, and on Belgrave Avenue between Industry Street and Knot Street. Partial street closures would begin on Friday, December 19, on Lamson Avenue, beginning at 8:00 PM, and full street closures along the event route on Saturday, December 20th, from 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Additionally, King Shocks has once again received approval from the Garden Grove Community Foundation to serve as a nonprofit organization to apply for the city's community event permit. Approval of the proposed Third Annual Christmas Toy Drive will not have an impact on the city's general fund. King Shocks Technology will reimburse the city for all direct costs associated with police, public works, and other staff support required for this event. It is recommended that the City Council consider approval of this written request from King Shocks Technology. And that concludes my staff report. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Colleagues, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, this event, I think this is going to be the third year, if I'm not mistaken. It's really gotten to be kind of a big deal. It brings all the gearheads in the city together, basically, and they they all donate a lot of toys for the needy children for Christmas. So it's really kind of a big deal. The lane closures are kind of insignificant. They're minor streets on the industrial areas, so they're really not... And it's on the weekend, so the businesses are closed anyway. So with that being said, I'd be honored to make the motion.
Happy to second, George.
May I just say something really quick? Yeah, I just wanted to kind of follow what Councilmember George Brightigam just mentioned. I have been there every single time that they invite us, and it was just amazing to see how many, you know, toys and things that make the kid happy, and you see the community come together and just have a great time. And so, yes, of course, I support this, but I just want to bring that up and say thank you for doing it for our community.
You just like the burnouts.
It is a really fun event. So we have a motion in a second?
I have a...
Oh, yeah.
Is this only for toys, or people can donate money, and anything else?
I believe they take donations, also monetary ones, but they promote it, if you bring a toy, you get entered into a raffle, and then they do these drawings throughout the event. And it really brings people from all over, not just here in Orange County. I know that people have traveled from as far as Nevada, and just to come and be part of the off-road community, so it's a great event.
Thank you.
Yeah, King Shocks is a very popular, big company in automotive aftermarket parts kind of thing, and you'll see King Shocks on, or King...
kind of thing, and you'll see King Shocks on, or King Parts on cars in Australia, Japan, you know, you name it. There's a car, there's probably a car with a King Shocks on it or something.
Very true. Fortunate to have them in, in Garden Grove. All right, motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Item number five.
Consideration of a request from LFA Group LLC to extend the operating hours and make an exemption to the city's noise ordinance on Wednesday, December 31st, 2025, at the Garden Amp. And Community Services Director John Montanes is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. This item is a request transmitted on behalf of LFA Group LLC, the production company that operates the Garden Amp located at the city's festival amphitheater. LFA is requesting approval to extend operating hours and to grant an exemption to the city's noise ordinance, specifically Municipal Code Section 8.47.040, to allow for higher noise levels from 10:00 PM to 12:15 AM on Wednesday, December 31st, 2025, and that's New Year's Eve. Since 2017, LFA has served as the city's production partner for the festival amphitheater. Under the current facility use agreement, the Garden Amp is permitted to operate and rent the facility until 10:00 PM. In the past, the city council has approved similar requests from LFA for their New Year's Eve celebrations. Most recently, in 2023 and 2024, to allow the venue to host the midnight countdown and celebrations welcoming the new year. Staff received a written request from LFA seeking approval to extend operating hours for the Garden Amp on New Year's Eve, December 31st, 2025, again, from 10:00 PM until 12:15 AM. There is no financial impact to the city as a result of this request. It is recommended that the city council consider and approve the written request from LFA to extend operating, operating hours at the Garden Amp from 10:00 PM to 12:15 AM on Wednesday, December 31st, 2025, and grant an exemption to the noise ordinance, municipal code, section 8.47.040, to allow higher noise levels during that period. That concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have a member from LFA to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Colleagues?
You can't really have a New Year's Eve party and have to close at 10. Kind of defeats the whole purpose, you know? So when they do that countdown, it just doesn't ring the same when they have to do it at 10 instead of midnight, right? So I go ahead, I'll make the motion.
Right, kind of kills the vibe, right?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
That'd be great. All right, with that, we are going to, let's see, where are we going? Recession, and we have to conduct other legislative bodies. I apologize to the other pink card in the audience. We'd already moved past oral communication this evening, and so if you have any questions, this shouldn't be a very long meeting. We'll be happy to talk with you before we leave this evening, or you can email any of us. I apologize for that. Okay, on to successor agency. A roll call, please.
Member Bredegum?
Yes.
Member Nguyen?
Yeah.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Adestegi?
Here.
Vice Chair Munyon?
Here.
And Chair Clomenstein?
Here. All right, we've conducted oral communication with other bodies. Under the consent calendar, I have one item. Receive and file the minutes from September 9th and the 23rd. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, any matters from successor members? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn and head back to city council. That takes us on to the consent calendar. We've already acted on items six and seven, so I need a motion in a second for the balance, unless somebody would like to pull an item. All right, I have a motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to ordinances. Our last item for this evening, item 22.
Item 22 is a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2970.
Second reading and adoption of ordinance number 2970 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Amending Provisions of the Land Use Code Relating to Substance Abuse Treatment Centers."
A motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a couple seconds. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, that takes us on to matters. We'll start in District 6.
Hello, hello, everyone. Thank you to everyone who congratulated me for the release of Taylor Swift's 12th album, The Life of a Showgirl. I appreciate all of your well wishes. I, it has been an amazing week. Thank you. I also want to make sure I congratulate and thank the folks that showed up today from our District 6 restaurants that represented us at Foods of Garden Grove Live. We had the wonderful Munyon's family from Sabroso and the folks from Los Sanchez. Not here today, we're the folks from Love Fish Poke, but we love their poke bowls, and I hope that you guys will continue to support all the wonderful businesses in District 6 and across our city as a whole. We had a very, very active couple of weeks. I had the wonderful privilege in honor of attending the League of California Cities Conference with our mayor, Stephanie, and Cindy, and our wonderful team, Matt and Sean. Omar was there, too. He was great. We had the opportunity to, to present on some amazing things for our city, and I had the privilege of being sworn in to the Orange County Division Board for the League of California Cities, representing District 2, which is encompasses like our central Orange County cities. And these groups that we have the, the honor and the privilege of being able to be a part of as members of these bodies, they serve very important functions for us as a municipality. They are groups that advocate for the needs and the wants of our small cities, and so it's very important for a city like Garden Grove to have representation on these boards, and I'm honored to be able to be that, that voice for our city within that body. I also have some updates from the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board. It is a mouthful, it is. But the most, the most kind of above the surface reminder is that it did just rain today. So make sure to be on the lookout for any standing water around your property. That is the easiest way to help us prevent the spread of mosquitoes and West Nile virus. There is also going to be some more scheduled spraying that's going to be taking place in Garden Grove in the northern portion of what is the District 2 area and our neighboring cities of Stanton and Anaheim. These are all part of scheduled sprays to help us get those adult mosquito populations. But it is really urgent, guys, that if you see any standing water around your property, to make sure to get rid of it, because we have had some positive incidents of West Nile within our city, and that is by way of the mosquitoes that get trapped in the vector control traps. They set up little, different types of traps around the city, and they test those mosquitoes, and they let us know if West Nile is detected in any of them. And that gives us an idea of the areas that we need to target to make sure that we prevent the spread of this disease. So make sure that you guys tackle those standing water sources as much as possible. Some fun upcoming community events that we have looking for, that we have to look forward to in District 6 also include the Noche de Altares, the altar night at Christ Cathedral, which is also my local parish. I'm very excited about it. It's going to be on the, on the 25th of October at 5:30 PM, and there is going to be food and music, celebrations, opportunities to have an altar there. So I highly recommend that if you, even if you're not a member of that parish, it's a wonderful event in honor of this lovely tradition that we have in the Hispanic community. So go and check it out. It's going to be a lot of fun. We also have another local organization that's hosting a Hispanic heritage event happening here at Steel Craft on November 2nd. So be on the lookout for more information with regards to that event and opportunities to participate there. It's going to be a local small Garden Grove celebration, again, honoring the traditions and music, food, our local artisans. So come and join us. A lot of fun stuff. I did also want to take the opportunity to, to take note of something that's come to my attention, because folks will come and ask me things that they see on social media, and I don't always have answers for them. I never want to answer for any of my other colleagues. But I do want to make sure that, given the opportunity, we try to dispel disinformation as much as possible. And I do think that it's important that, that we address a topic that has come to my attention recently, and that is comments that have been made with regards to some of our city employees, and whether we, as members of the city council, have the authority to fire them. And the fact of the matter, guys, is we, as members of the city council, whether it's the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, any individual member of our city council does not have the authority individually to fire any member of our city staff, whether it's a volunteer, an intern, a department head. We cannot individually call for their firing. So I want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding as to what the limits and the extents of our powers are. We are here as a council because we have to make decisions collectively as a body, and that's why we require majority votes for any policies that we put forward. And according to our city code, if you guys take a look at it, there are really only two people within our city organization that we actually have the authority to really bring before for consideration. That's our city attorney and our city manager. For everyone else, we have a human relations professional and an HR department that goes through all of those things. None of us can ask for any member of our city staff to be fired and have that go through. So I just want to make sure that, that we clarify that, and I hope, I hope that we all here on the dais understand that. And, and if you have any questions, you can always reach out to our wonderful city attorney, our wonderful city management, and they can clarify any of those questions. But I think it's important that in order for us to continue operating and have the public trust, that we're very careful about not creating a difficult environment for our employees or an environment of confusion with our residents. So I'm sure that we're all going to move forward with the adequate discretion. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you have all had a great start to October. And I want to give a shout out to our council for wearing green in, in honor of breast awareness, cancer breast awareness. I have had a great, so I've had a few events that I've attended to. I had a great time at Foods of Garden Grove Live, the event that took place at Village Green, Green Park a few weeks ago. The food was amazing, and it was especially nice to see many District 5 eateries represented, from the live music to the glow themed activities. It was a fun and vibrant evening that really highlighted the diversity and flavor of our city. It is, it is a great, it was a great reminder of how special our local businesses are and how events like this bring our community together. So thank you to all who organized. I know there is a lot of our staff members that were out there enjoying themselves as well, as well as making sure everything was running smoothly. So thank you all for your time and dedication. I also was, I had the privilege of kickstarting the fall season by attending the Mid Autumn Festival at Stanley Elementary School with my family. It was such a fun and meaningful event with the help of Garden Grove High School Vietnamese Students Association, who brought incredible dragon dancers and helped run games for the kids. The school was able to put a celebration that really brought the community together. It was great to see families enjoy the evening and celebrating such an important cultural tradition right here in our city. I, this past weekend, I also recently attended the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove Toasting Great Futures event, which raised an important, raised important funds to support the incredible work they do for youth. One of the highlights for me was hearing a heartfelt testimonial from a staff member who shared how, how much the club meant to her growing up, and now she comes full circle to work with the organization. It was a powerful reminder of the long-term impact that the, the club has in our community. And as a former staff member myself, I was especially, it was especially meaningful to see that legacy of service and support continued. Lastly, I have a matter I would like to bring forth to this council. I would like to recognize November as Native American Heritage Month. In reviewing the list of past proclamations provided by staff, I noticed that the last time we formally organized this was in October of 2021. Given that yesterday was Indigenous People Day, I feel especially fitting and timely. It is important that we continue to honor the history and the culture and the contributions of Native American communities. With that said, I'd like to request that we bring forward a proclamation for the November 12th meeting, and I would like to ask for a second.
Love to second.
But would you, would you rather have it reoccur like every year, October-ish, because that's when the Indigenous actual day is, or do you want to do it in November?
I believe it was, it's for November.
Do you want to do it in November this year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have it reoccur every year after that, in November or in October?
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. Definitely. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm thinking October might be more appropriate, since that's when the Indigenous People Day lands, right, in October?
I mean, I
Yeah, we can figure out the calendarizing.
Want to bring it back for action? Yes.
Oh, awesome.
So that's a motion in a second for that. Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Bredegum?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dovin?
I'd like to entertain an alternative motion. Can I get one? What do I go?
Tell us what you want.
Okay. I'm not opposed to recognizing the Native American Month or Indigenous Day. In fact, I was going to speak to it, but I have a little bit of a different proposal. And if the mayor and the council want to consider it, it's up to you guys. And I've espoused this position before, and that is to split the day in two. I want recognition for Indigenous Day starting at midnight to noon of the day that is now known as Columbus Day. It's just recognized by the Trump administration to restore this Monday, past Monday, as Columbus Day. I think we all need to celebrate our common heritage. We are all indigenous in one way or another. I'm a newcomer. I missed having somebody on the dais mention my name, trying to remind me that I am of refugee and immigrant background. I'm a newcomer. And someday, we will be the Indigenous people, and there will be new peoples coming onto our lands, and I surely hope that the new people will treat us better than we had treated the Indigenous people. So with all seriousness, I'd like to entertain a motion for a proclamation recognizing the day that's not, now has come to be known as Columbus Day. We split the day in half. At midnight, we start celebrating Indigenous Day. And to noon, at noon, we begin to celebrate Columbus Day until midnight of the same day. And I hope this becomes a movement. We'll split it nationally. But let's start with Garden Grove. There's room enough for everybody. We don't need to take sides. I'm tired of having to take sides, pushing back and forth, immigrants versus refugees, versus non-immigrants, versus illegal immigrants, versus immigration enforcement. I'm tired of it. There's room for everybody. Yes, we can celebrate both, Indigenous Day and Columbus Day. Yes, we can celebrate both, Indigenous Day and Columbus Day. I congratulate Italian-Americans on the re-recognition of Columbus Day. Can we all celebrate that? But I'm also calling out the history of colonization. It's evil. And I said, we are all indigenous in one way or another. And certainly, new people coming on to our lands should treat us better than how we had treated the Native Americans, the indigenous on this continent. So that's my substitute motion. And I want a proclamation that will split the day. I'm not opposed to my council members and mayor, Yasenia and Arianna and everyone who second the motion. I'm just calling for a substitute motion. You can second me, you can turn me down, doesn't matter. I've stated it officially on the record. We can celebrate everybody. Let's split the day. Midnight to noon, indigenous people came on to these lands first. They were here first. We'll celebrate half of the day, 12 hours, as Indigenous Day. And from noon to midnight, we celebrate Columbus Day. Thank you.
Yeah, and Joe, I totally agree with you. I think, I think there's room for both. However, I don't think this is a substitute motion because hers was for the month, had nothing to do with the actual day. She was trying to make November Indigenous People Month. And so I don't thi- and it's not even in the same month. So I think it's kind of not even a substitute motion. But I do support you. I think, I think there's plenty of room. I know the Italian-American people were a little
That's, that's fine.
When they, they got rid of Columbus Day and
I withdraw it as a substitute motion. We can go ahead and vote on the month. And if it's recurring, bring it back in October. I'm fine with that. I will vote on that and for that, and I will make a new motion when it's my time.
So you're, you're withdrawing your substitute at this time. We're going to vote on Native American for November.
Right.
Okay, we're going to go back to the original. Is that, are you comfortable with that?
I am, thank you.
All right, so we have, we had a motion and a second, and I think we were in the process of voting on that, okay?
Correct. So Mayor Protem Dovin, your vote?
Are we in a roll call vote?
Yes. You were the following vote before
Thank you, yes.
Yes. Councilmember Nguyen Ton?
Yes.
Councilmember Estegi?
Absolutely.
And Mayor Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay. Councilwoman, did you have more to discuss under matters?
No, that is all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem.
Congratulations to everybody who receives the Spotlight Award tonight. It is my favorite part of the council meeting. The second favorite is oral communications, as I've always stated. And I missed having my name mentioned. Tonight, I welcome it. In fact, next time, I will rebut it. That's what I'm here for, a civil discourse, civil dialogue. And I already stated a motion which I missed communicated as a substitute motion. I withdraw that, and I'm making a new motion then for a resolution to split Columbus Day, as I've mentioned, the first part starting midnight to noon as Indigenous Day. And the second part of that day, from noon to midnight, we celebrate it here in Garden Grove as Columbus Day. On the occasion that Columbus Day and Indigenous Day occur simultaneously, that's my motion for a resolution here in Garden Grove. And we can vote for it, and we can bring it back every year as a recurring resolution.
Yeah, I, I'll give that a second.
Thank you, sir.
But do we need to split it in half like that? Can we just make both that day for both?
Recognize both?
And just do it, I mean, instead of trying to split it by, okay, these 12 hours and these 12, can't we just say the day is both Indigenous and Columbus Day, and we can celebrate our entirety of our community?
Thank you, George. I think that is a good idea, but I'd like to maintain it as both, yes. No problem with that.
That'd be my, that'd be my suggestion.
Hold on, and I agree, and thank you for your second. I'm just saying that in the resolution itself, right, we can mention that we celebrate the day for both Indigenous and Columbus Day. And if people want to split the day, they can. If they want to, because they want to have full dedication to one part of the celebration or the other, it's just a suggestion. But I agree, we can just celebrate both days if council think that that's appropriate. I do. So, yeah, let's do it.
May I have a, just a point of order with our city attorney? Have we ever placed any of these dates specifically? I know we, we do a lot of resolutions or proclamations for a month-long, but have we ever done something like this for a specific federal holiday or national holiday or whatever you want to call it? Have we done this a day before?
We have not, but we haven't had a federal holiday that different states celebrate differently. In some states, it is called Columbus, in other states, it's called Indigenous. In California, I think we changed it from Columbus to Indigenous.
Okay, okay, just curious. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
Councilmember Bridgum?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Tran?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dovin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen Ton?
No.
Councilmember Estegi?
Hard no.
And Mayor Klaffenstein? Motion carries with five yes votes with Councilmember Nguyen Ton and Councilmember Estegi voting no. Okay?
Mayor?
Yeah.
If I may continue. Thank you for the motion and thank you for the yes votes. And thank you for the no votes. Now you're on the record with a no vote, as I've been on the record with absentee vote. And I will vote no as well, if that's my position. So I appreciate your candor, appreciate your hard no. I want to congratulate the Palestinians and Israelis on their ceasefire and peace deal that's been brokered. I call for celebration. Whether it's a lasting peace or a very tenuous peace, it is peace. And now I hope the humanitarian assistance will flow into Gaza and that war will not continue. Before I end, I just want to cite Matthew 5, verse 9. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God. Thank you. Good night.
Councilwoman?
So every time when it comes to my part, I'm always excited to say with everyone about all the events I attend. But before I start, I'm just, Councilmember Yasenia already mentioned about the pink hat and pink clothes that we wear today. That's because October is breast cancer awareness, and that's why we wear pink. Okay, so I got to attend many events, and I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. First, this one is for the high school student. I went to Bosak Grand Multicultural Night and Garden Grove Moon Festival. It was amazing seeing the students performing. And for some of you, if you ever have time, just check the school. And I think my mayor already went because your daughter is there and performs several times. But I posted some update performance online. It's just great performance and just make my heart like smile and happy just to see them performing. Next, I want to talk about a couple of the event in the city. Our congratulations to Orange County Beauty College. They have been in our city for 16 years. And so they just have the grand opening again for the school. For this school, they also have English-speaking, Korean, and also Vietnamese teacher. So that's just for the student who would be interested in learning how to make people become beauty, beautiful, then please contact the school. I attended Silver Spoon Award. Congratulations to all the award winner. It was very variety, like many different nonprofit groups, also including our teen accent. One of the teen accents was there and received the award. So congratulations to all the award winner. Next is the OC, Orange County Fire Authority Open House. This was another great event where little kids just, you know, come and check out the fire truck and get to see where the firemen living and where they cook and they exercise. It was just so great to see them walking and smiling and talking and just having their hat on and being happy about that. I went to the Cal City event and Councilmember Arianna already mentioned about that. I just want to mention a couple thing. When we go to event like this, it's take a couple days. And so for me, I reached out to all the council members to see how they handle, you know, different thing in this city. And one of the council member, this one from Newport Beach, and we were talking about how they handle, you know, the homeless issue. And they were just saying how they have their, their whole entire city, the churches, you know, support. And so the homeless people have to report, and they make that happen right in the parking and different thing that anytime if the homeless do not follow the rule, they actually get to zip out the city, which is, you know, that's as an example. You get to see how all the people doing thing and just learn from that or just sharing. And so kudo to our mayor and our staff for the homeless, the navigation center panel. It was great. So our mayor was the moderator, and we have our staff, Ushala and Westminster and Full- no, Fountain Valley was there. And people, there was a lot of people in the audience. They were so excited to learn about what did we do to make that happen, and they want to learn from us. So there was, you know, many people talking to us at the end. So great job from our staff and our mayor. Couple thing that, this is from the resident, so I have to address this. First one is about the coyote. I actually, one was in my backyard and tried to get, you know, the cat. And then last night, my neighbor saw three of them roaming on the street. So this is something really serious. I talked to our staff, what can we do as a resident? So couple thing that I want our resident to pay attention to. Don't leave food outside, you know, food, you know, and drink, and that's why to attract them. And also, when you see them, don't run away, try to scare them, you know. Our director Bill also mentioned that you could even get the horn so that way when they get closer to you and you press the horn, just scare them. So that way, next time when they come closer to the human, they know that, you know, you shouldn't do that because you're going to get all this scary thing. So don't run away, but try to scare them. Next is a couple people reached out to me about the pickleball. They want to have our tennis court to have different kind of, have the pickleball court on top of the tennis court. So I just want to bring it up here. Our staff looking into it, and we will have some kind of progress in that area. Last but not least, we are planning for Community Cleanup Day on October 25th from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. It's going to be at Gilbert and Chapman location. I do that with Councilmember Philip Nguyen here because that between District 3 and District 4, 2. So I would like to invite any resident out there, parents, students, come and join us. It's going to be an easy walk. Just from corner of Gilbert, go down to Brokeus, a quick exercise if you see trash put in the bag, and then come back. So just to make it a fun day, I were able to get a couple businesses there to donate food and goodie bag. So there will be, I just want to say thank to Teng Huan Heung for donating the sandwiches. Tommy Burger for cover meal for our policemen. They're going to be there to be part of the event. And also, Southland for donating drink and goodie bag for you to take home. And I just heard from the group that our mayor gonna donate the water for the walk-in queue. So thank you, mayor. Also, the event is supported by Kiwanis Club, Neighborhood Association, Women's, Woman Club? Yeah, of course. Chamber of Commerce and Public Works for bringing the bean. And the Republic Service, they're going to donate the mask, the glove, the grapple, and the bag and all that. So it's going to be a fun day, so come and join us. And last time, if you walk, you don't, you remember how much food you get. So this time, it's going to be similar. Not just that, you're going to have fun talking to the people around there too. Also, I want to say thank to Lisa for providing the phone number, the contact of the business around there. So I were able to call a couple places, and they are excited about it. They said, send a flyer, they're going to tell the employee and it's how the, the business around there to join us or just clean up their area the same day. So hopefully, at the end, it's going to be a clean spray and address some of the issue or the problem that we have in that corner. Like I said, the police is going to be part of that walk-in queue. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Tonight, I'm so glad that we are able to recognize so many community spotlight and adopt many proclamation, recognition, especially the Magnolia Park Families Resort Centers and the Red Ribbon Week. Also, it's very important is the October for the breast cancer awareness. On last Friday, October 3rd, I was, I have the honor to join with Mother Mayor Klaffenstein. We participate on the Korean-American senior of Orange County. I would like to mention a few things that they accomplished. They are a nonprofit organization. They focus on providing social support, welfare services, education classes, and many other event that, and the event was so robust. I'm so proud of their community and admire and respect the spirit of the solidarity of the Korean-American community there. That's it for me today. Thank you.
Excuse me. Sure, turn on the mic and cough. Good. Anyway, so again, we, we talked, was it two nights ago? The John Reynolds K-9, I'm sorry, the John Reynolds You Support K-9 Association amongst many other activities that day. Stephanie, I were at a lot of them, had their fundraisers. Casino night right across the hall over here. Really neat event, and I broke the jinx. I actually won something in the raffle.
Hey!
I got an air fryer, so I'm going to start eating healthier, I guess. But anyway, after the event, I got a couple texts and some posts and whatnot, and people like, oh darn, I really wanted to go, and, you know, I forgot all about it and this kind of thing. So if you are inclined and you would like to support a very great organization, and they, they handle all the K-9, you, you've probably seen the ones at the school, the little labs that they take around, and they're, you know, and they're the You Support K-9. You can go to online at the John Reynolds You Support K-9. Just Google it, pull up, and there's a donate button. And if you weren't able to And if you weren't able to, you know, attend the fundraiser, well, you can still donate to the cause. And I'm sure they'd be really grateful because, and it's a really great program. You know, driving, well, actually, I took my daughter's car to the shop the other day. And I walked home after I dropped it off. And walking down Valley View, just so much trash has blown in along the street. So if I could get staff to kind of look at that because it's, it's in bad shape. There's a lot of, a lot of garbage and whatnot had blown in there along Valley View between Chapman and Lamson. And also, Caltrans along the freeways, when you're driving, you're going to see a lot. And I know Caltrans is responsible to that. So if we can reach out and give them a little heads up that they need to show some love out there with the trash. Talked about the coyotes, really important. You know, coyotes are natural to the area. They were here before humans. And they're going to be here long after we're gone. You know, there, you know, a lot of people, because we get urbanized, they, they fear coyotes. And realistically, coyotes aren't anything to fear, more than a skunk or a raccoon or any other wild animal. Coyotes aren't wolves. They're not, they're not mountain lions. They're not bears, okay? They're coyotes 99.999% of the time. You clap your hand, stomp your foot, and they're going to run away. But that's not zero. We do occasionally get a coyote who gets aggressive. When that happens, you need to make sure you report that. And you can report it on the city app. You can call city, and they're going to document it. We do have a contract with a trapper. And they will make the notifications and get the trapper out there. You don't want to use them willy-nilly because quite frankly, for every coyote that you remove, they're very territorial. So for every coyote that you take, two will take their place in that same territory. So you're actually compounding the problem when you remove a coyote. But if it's a problem coyote that's aggressive, you need to get rid of it. And if two non-aggressive coyotes come in, great. That's, 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 that's a win, okay? But, you know, there is kind of an irrational fear that a lot of people have with coyotes because they look scary. But the reality is, you know, the Orange County has tracked coyote attacks for over 80 years now. And it's almost negligible. I mean, it almost never, it has happened. It's not zero. That's why I say, if you get that. But, you know, there, there's probably in 80 years been less than 10. So it's a very, very rare thing for a coyote to attack a human. They will take a small animal and that kind of stuff. And that's why you got to take the precautions that Cindy talked about, Councilwoman Tran talked about. So anyway, talking about coyotes. And lastly, we were at the Chili Cook Off. And I was talking to some of the OCFA firefighters right there on Valley View. And the little remote control that they have that stops the light for the fire engine to take off for the emergencies. So Huntington Beach did a, a contract where they went all the way up Bolsachica. And they're going all the way up Valley View, all the way to Lincoln. And they're timing the lights, the signal lights. It's a, it's a project that Huntington Beach is the front on. And when they got to in front of the fire station, they did some changes to the electrical cabinet. And they took the little controller. And so they still have the remote, but it doesn't work anymore. So the fire trucks will go, they got an emergency. And they've got to wait sometimes five minutes for traffic to go by. They can't get out there on the street. They can't stop the light like they used to be able to. They used to be able to make it red or, you know, turn it so that traffic would stop. So, and, you know, again, they've got their sirens on and that kind of stuff. So most times, people stop. But it's, it's a lot safer for everyone. And it's a lot faster for the fire department to respond, you know, especially if it's your mother or father or sister or brother that had a heart attack and you're wanting the fire department to get there quick. Those, those minutes count. So I'd like to see, you know, either staff reach out to Huntington Beach to replace that in the electrical cabinet there in front of the fire station or get a new one or whatever it needs to happen. But let's, let's make that a priority. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Well, I apologize if I'm going to sound redundant. You guys talked about everything already. But I just wanted to, I think, make mention this past Saturday. It was extremely eventful. But I think how blessed are we to have a community where there's so many people, so many events, so many opportunities to give back, to be of service, to volunteer, to want to host these events in our community. And then for us to be able to attend and enjoy within our community, it's wonderful. From the OCFA Open House to a Chili Cook Off in West Garden Grove to celebrating the Boys and Girls Club at Toasting Great Futures. And then the John Reynolds Youth K-9 Foundation Gala at the end of the evening. It was wonderful. And then Sunday, our chamber hosted the Silver Spoons. So very busy weekend in Garden Grove. Wonderful opportunities to get involved in the community. So I'm grateful to everyone for that. I also wanted to mention the Cal Cities Conference. Congratulations, Arianna, on your position. I know you'll serve the city well. And we did. We had a fantastic panel. I was very fortunate to get to moderate that. Our Assistant City Manager and Economic Development Director Ursula Luna Reynosa was on that panel, as well as the city managers from Westminster and Fountain Valley to be able to talk about the Central Cities Navigation Center, sort of our approach and our strategic plan for homelessness and to share how we came together with shared visions and goals and collaborated to create something like that Navigation Center. It was a proud moment and wonderful to be able to highlight the, the good work. So thank you to staff for the presentation that was put together for that. It was well received. And it's wonderful to be able to share what we're doing here locally with cities in a space where there's people from all over the state, not just Orange County there. And so they were very interested. We had a packed house and lots of questions after. So I think it resonated with the people in that, in that meeting. So thank you so much for that. And with that, I will turn it to Assistant City Manager Matt West.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No report tonight.
All right. City Attorney, anything?
Nothing from me either.
All right. With that, we stand adjourned. Thanks for wearing pink, everyone.